Are we ready to go? Welcome to this evening's workshop session. We will get the meeting started. Call to order. Next, we have our roll call.
All board members are present except for Jennifer Williams. She is attending virtually, watching the meeting.
Thank you. Next, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have presentations. We have a series of presentations that Ms. Melinda Stevens is going to share with us.
Dr. Beresford and members of the board, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce the Carmel High School students who were recently recognized by the College Board's National African-American Recognition Program, National Hispanic Recognition Program, and National Indigenous Recognition Program. Each of these programs identify students who have demonstrated academic excellence while working to create pathways to college for underrepresented students. Students eligible for this program have a GPA of 3.5 or higher, have excelled on the PSAT, and/or have earned a score of three or higher on AP exams. The students recognized tonight can include this honor on college and scholarship applications as a way to help them stand out during the admissions and scholarship award process. Carmel High School takes great pride in presenting these students to you through the following video presentation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And we're extremely excited to recognize our students. And well, congratulations to all of our academic scholars. Next on the -- oh, and I do want to just point out there was one particular academic scholar whose mom happens to be on board. So we are very excited to have Kaya.
Thank you, Leila.
You want to put a little plug in for your daughter and tell her congratulations?
I just want to pull a plug in for all the students that were recognized today. Thank you for your hard work, your persistence. It is noted, and wish you continued success. And your mommy loves you, Kaya.
Next on the agenda, we have consent. And in consent this evening, we've got the personnel report, claims, and payroll. May I get a motion on the table to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of supporting consent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And I do want to just comment as well. Jennifer Williams is online. She is listening, but she is not part of the voting group this evening. We won't have that. We have a policy that we're hoping to pass at our next meeting. So then whenever we do participate virtually, we will be able to have a voting voice. But until then, we're happy that Jennifer is able to join us and is going to be hearing some really interesting, exciting information about our workshop topics, which is what we have next on the agenda. We have our mental health workshop topics. And tonight, we have Ms. Stephanie Whiteside, who's going to be presenting.
Which one is ours?
Okay, I didn't put it on here. So do you have it? Just give me a second.
Okay.
Go ahead and start.
For those of you who are watching virtually, we're having some technical difficulties. And we will be starting the -- we'll be starting the presentation momentarily.
Dr. Beresford, do you have anything you'd like to share with the community? Maybe about your beard?
Well, thanks for pointing that out. And I probably can't see it very well because I'll go ahead and do a, you know, exposure there. There it is. And I would apologize for the gruff or the scruff. But it is November. And now for several years, it's been a tradition of mine to offer the No Shave November Challenge. And what the challenge is, is to grow a mustache throughout the month of November and earn your Mowbro status, which would be if you go for that mustache. Or you could join Beresford's Band of Bearded Brothers and just go for the whole beard. And for those who are not participating, it's not a problem at all. We welcome support of anybody. But the challenge is to bring awareness to mental health, reduce that stigma that surrounds mental health, and encourage folks who are struggling to reach out. And really, we want folks to know that it's okay not to be okay. Especially in this season of pandemic, we've seen upticks across the board, kids and in adults that have struggled some. We've also recently seen some examples of Olympic athletes and professional sports, folks that have come out and talked about their battles with anxiety and depression in different settings. And also talking about the steps they've taken, you know, to get, to recover from that and to deal with that. And they're encouraging others to do the same. So we've come a long way since the very first time we've done this challenge. And I feel like, you know, we're kind of maybe turning a corner where mental health is getting the same status as physical health. And so anyhow, for all of you guys that want to get away from the razor, this is your big opportunity. And but so we'll be sporting the beard, you know, at least through the month of November. And then we'll see how it goes. A lot of guys across the district are doing it. They've taken a picture, a clean shaven picture. And we're going to try to get a picture when we're in full beard mode. So but anyhow, it's kind of a fun way just to bring attention to a serious topic and one that we really want to just take, you know, this little bit of time to acknowledge that folks that are struggling with mental health and it's okay. And let's talk about it and let's get the help that you need. So that's it. So I apologize in advance that your superintendent will be looking pretty rough for about three or four more weeks. With that, are you guys ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we'll hand it over to the professionals and looking forward to this workshop.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and I apologize for the delay there. And it looks like we're still trying to get it projected. But I'll just go ahead and get started. I know that'll get going here soon. So it was just a little over a year ago last year when we discussed that we had partnered or started a contract with Extension St. Vincent to provide mental health services to our students. And it was very timely as we've definitely seen a need with our students and in the community. And so I'd like to share just a little bit of information about what we've been doing this past year and then what we're going to continue to do as well. So looking at the continuum of services, as we know, it's not a one size fits all for our students. So we want to make sure that we have a variety of services and supports and programming in place that can address different needs, all the way from those that might be more preventative and really just there to spread awareness to help with, you know, healthy coping habits, bullying, abuse prevention. Also, some of our building buddies are mentoring, looking at our culture and climate as well as SEL and diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. All of this really helps support the whole child and starts to promote some of those resiliency factors that really helps them find a good place for them to be in to learn. And then we start to move into more of our supportive, restorative type of services. With that, we're looking at our mental health partnership, making sure that we're making referrals as needed, but also even internally looking at brief interventions. So that might be, you know, two peers may have a disagreement and just helping them with some conflict resolution. It may be somebody's feeling really stressed about a test and we're just providing them some support for strategies on how to manage some of that stress. With our teachers, it may be professional development on what resources are available for our students and how to make a referral if they feel that our students may benefit from one of those resources. And then also our social workers and counselors providing skills groups that really just help develop those characteristic traits or really looking at those resiliency pieces and then also coping and calming skills as well. And then we get more at the more intensive end here with the responsive services. And that would be our crisis assessment. So if a student has expressed suicidal ideation or threat assessments, that might also include assistance with coordinating services at a higher level of intensity or assistance. So a hospital referral, referral to residential services, but just also making sure that no matter what that referral or where that referral goes to, that we're coordinating care so that when that student returns to our buildings, they receive additional support. And also, you know, we're just looking out for their well-being and making sure that we're making that transition as easy as possible and as successful as possible as well. So our mental health referrals in 2020, from August to October 18th, when I ran this data, we had made five mental health referrals for mental health assistance. And much of that was, we did not have that partnership fully in place yet. We had just started and just started hiring. But we also saw across the board that there was just a lower amount of those referrals. This year, just this year from August to October 18th, we've already made 99 mental health referrals. And we are sending referrals every day. And this does not include self-referrals. So some of the information John will be presenting, you'll see that number look a little bit different because parents are also able to call Extension St. Vincent and make an appointment to have an intake for their students. So these are just those that our social workers, our counselors, are referring with parent permission. And then we did have last school year, a total of 323 referrals. And that was from that October 18th date until the end of school. Suicide risk screens right now are where we're really taking a look at what we can continue to do to support our students. So last year around this time, so once again, that August date, the beginning of school until October 18th, last year, we did 41 suicide screens. And those are completed by one of our social workers, our counselors, who are trained in the Columbia Suicide Screening Process. This year, from those, from that same date range, we see that there's been 101 suicide screens. And so that's just within a few months. I do monitor those. We continue to screen almost daily. And so one of the things that we're really looking at is just the stress on our students and the day-to-day stress that they may be experiencing and how we can continue to support them through the transition. As we know, through media and then just through, you know, reading different research articles, the pandemic has been very difficult for many students. And so, and for many parents and adults as well in our community. So we want to continue to identify strategies to provide that support. And also, we're just grateful to our social workers, counselors, and our partnership for all the work that they have done to really support our students and to ensure that they are aware of any risk factors and that they're responding to that. And that goes out to our teachers and our administrators as well. I do think with this number going up, it does demonstrate that they are very much aware and that they are making those referrals whenever they see risk factors present, which is very important for prevention and, you know, harm reduction. So looking at moving forward, we always talk about that we want to continue to address the whole child. And so as we look at what we are hoping to provide this year for families and students, we've started some workshops, so workshop series related to social, emotional learning and mental health. And in a minute, I'm going to show some of those workshops we have coming up. We just, last week, did a conscious discipline hands-on workshop where families were able to look at the experience of conscious discipline within the classroom. We had some make and takes where they were able to recreate some of the strategies and tools that we use in the classroom. And they were able to take that with them. We also are going to continue to support referral and linkage to some of those resources that our families need. As we come up on the holidays, we know that there's a lot of services available and resources in our community. And our social workers and counselors are really at the front line of linking families with some of those resources. We've also started our Social Emotional Learning Parent Advisory. And so we have over 26 members on our advisory. We've already had our first meeting. And we're going to continue to work with our parents and just really hear their voice as we start to, when we actually continue our efforts with social, emotional learning. And then we have also updated our Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health webpages on our CCS accounts. So families are able to go to those webpages and they can find resources. There's some videos as well that are helpful. And then also, if they're needing a resource, many of those resources are listed on the webpage. We're also going to continue to work with our students just to develop those, you know, internal coping and calming skills. So helping them just with that goal achievement and goal setting, but also looking at strategies that continue to increase motivation, really support positive social relationships and those healthy coping skills. We also are continuing to look at stress management skills and promoting not only mental health but physical health as well because we know that our minds and our bodies are very much connected. And so when we are able to, you know, really, you know, regulate some of our emotions and recognize some of the, you know, some of the indicators that we may be feeling stressed, we often can feel that within our body. And so just helping students be aware of how the brain works and then how that influences physical health as well is so important. And then with our staff, we have started another book study for some of our incoming teachers who have not had experience with conscious discipline. We also are continuing to do workshops for those who do have experience but just want to be able to share some of those tools and continue to grow their knowledge of conscious discipline. We've also been doing, just working with our advisory. So we do have the Whole Child Committee, which is, it is comprised of principals, assistant principals, some of our psychologists, social workers, and counselors. And so just working together to continue to identify strategies and continuing to develop that common language. And then just providing consultation as needed. We often are meeting with teachers or with principals just to talk about those strategies for supporting students and then also ensuring that, you know, that they're able to identify beneficial resources that are really going to help support their mental health. As we know, with the current mental health needs, it's made it so that a lot of our mental health providers, not just with Extension, but in the community, are very strapped. And so people are seeing wait lists. And so it's really pushed us to be more creative and think outside of the box as far as referrals and supports. So looking at, is it, you know, putting in place a mentor in the meantime going to be helpful? Supporting those academics if, you know, they're really stressed or really struggling and how can we continue to support them so that they feel accomplished and effective? And so just identifying some of those other, you know, dimensions of wellness that we can continue to support to help them, especially if they're, you know, getting into those services. But I am very grateful because with having those services, we have definitely been able to get our students in sooner. They're able to get an assessment and then they're able to get the support that they need. So before I hand it over to John Ferguson, I'm going to share some of our upcoming Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health workshops that we will have available for our parents. So we're really excited. This year, we really wanted to focus on K through 12 and making sure there was something for everybody. And so we will be doing workshops all the way through to May. Our next Conscious Discipline will be in January. And then we also are going to, in December, be doing our QPR, which is our suicide prevention that we do for parents who are interested in becoming a QPR gatekeeper. And QPR stands for question, persuade, and refer. And so that is the same training that we provide to our teachers and to some of our older students as well when it comes to just recognizing some of the signs and then being able to respond effectively. All right. Well, I am going to go ahead and introduce John Ferguson, who is the Program Manager of Extension St. Vincent.
Mrs. Whiteside, wouldn't it be all right if we asked, we pause for a moment and ask some questions?
Sure, absolutely.
First, thank you very, very much. I'm extremely excited about, well, that we have made such an effort to provide the services within the school day for our students and that we are providing professional development for our professional educators for recognition. And as well as, I guess, educating the student that it's okay to not be okay and to reach out. A couple of questions that I have and I know other board members have. For the Columbia, the suicide screening, you had said there were 100, over 100 this semester so far between August and October 18th. What is the age range that we are looking at? I mean, is it across the board? Is it middle school and high school? Is it predominantly high school?
So we do see it predominantly in high school and middle school. But what I will say this year is we are starting to see a rise in those that are coming in from elementary schools. And so I've done a lot of retraining because I have had counselors and social workers reach out from our elementaries and say, you know, I've just had to do a screen and I haven't had to do one in a while. And so just making sure that we are reeducating has been so important because we have seen that we are doing more screens for younger students.
And then all of these opportunities for people in the community, for board members, for, I guess, everybody, these caregiver and student workshops, are these all located on the SEL page, on the webpage?
Yes, we continue to update it. I'll be adding these specific dates and then that will be updated. But we had our, our fall lineup is on there.
Okay.
With the dates and then also a link for them to sign up as well.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Well, I'd like to echo Leila's thank you. And thank you for what you do every day for our students. We really appreciate it. The question I have is, can you explain to me what the screening is? Is there something that triggers it? Or how do we, you know, why do we get those numbers?
That's a great question. And so all of our, well, our teachers that teach grades five through 12 do receive training in QPR, suicide prevention training. And so what that does is it really teaches them on how to be on the lookout for clues and cues. And so they, we talk about situational clues. So, you know, maybe failing, you know, a class that they really were trying to pass. Or maybe they've had a recent breakup. Or they've experienced that type of, you know, environmental stressor. Also, just being aware of verbal clues. So that might be direct statements or indirect statements that may allude to just feeling depressed or feeling hopeless and helpless in their situation. And so it goes over each of those clues so that we're just aware and on the lookout. And I always say it's really important to pay attention to frequency and intensity. So, you know, sometimes we might have somebody who's just having a bad day. But if we start to see that, okay, there's many situational clues. They've also made some comments. I'm a little bit nervous or a little bit concerned. And so that's when I may need to make a referral to the social worker or to the counselor. And at that point, it really becomes a discussion between, it could be a teacher or principal, and then that social worker and counselor. And they will kind of discuss what they're seeing. And then the social worker and counselor would meet with that student in order to provide that Columbia screen. And the Columbia screen is very brief. It's only like five questions. They are very direct questions. And really, what we're looking for is just really the, where they're at with their risk. So it might be something where there's thoughts and maybe they've started to consider some of those thoughts. And that might be related to, you know, some mental health issues. However, it goes all the way to having specific plans or, you know, specific ideas for how they're going, you know, how their mind is thinking, how they're feeling, and also just not really being able to see kind of the light at the end of the tunnel there.
I don't know that I have questions, but I just want to express how I truly appreciate this work that you're doing, Ms. Whiteside. This work is extremely important. Emotional intelligence and conflict resolution is something that we coach on in the talent development and HR part of corporate America. And so it's great to see that we're getting a head start on ensuring that students not only have that support at home, but have it at school. And so I think that it's a combined effort, you know, in ensuring that kids have that emotional support. And so, you know, we know students learn first from what they see at home and experience at home. But they also learn from what they experience at school and with their peers. but they also learn from what they experience at school and with their peers. And seeing that emotional health is important in all areas is just really invaluable. The next thing that I will share is I just love that you guys are putting together or offering a program around mentoring. It's great to see that students are learning the value of either being mentored or mentoring others in school because they'll carry that on in a college setting or in a trade and trying to learn from someone else, right? So I really appreciate that. And then with, you know, COVID last year and this year, we expect so much of our students. We expect them to constantly be willing to adapt and pivot and that, that can be a lot for younger minds. And so this avenue, providing children the opportunity to say, you know, I need help or I don't feel the best mentally right now, I need support, I think gives them that outlet there. And as a last thing I'll share, as a person that went through breast cancer last year, knowing that my children had that support at school to feel free to come in and say, you know, I'm hurting or I'm sad. I just needed that. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My question, Stephanie and also maybe Dr. O, we didn't talk about it a lot, but I know that this year and stuff has been a ton of stress and anxiety for our staff and our teachers. So could you talk a little bit maybe perhaps about some of the things we're doing to support them also?
Absolutely. So we are very fortunate that we do have the employee assistance program here at Carmel Clay Schools that, and we also do have mental health therapists located in the wellness center, which I can just say as a therapist myself and then of course as a mental health coordinator, I think is phenomenal because as I talk with my counterparts elsewhere, I know how, how important it is to have that support available to teachers and staff. And I do know that many of them have commented that it has been very helpful to have that available as well. This year we did do mind-body medicine workshops for each of our schools. So we did hold those after school and we had them online and we had them in person as well. And I continue to follow up with that and plan to continue to do that. It's a really, really great workshop. And then there's also an eight-week group session that really helps as well. But the big part of that or the, the big takeaway with that mind-body medicine is it's all about that work-life balance and really taking care of our needs and being aware of stress. So sometimes we're able to take something off our plate, but sometimes it's not just because of the environment, the pandemic. Sometimes things just feel like it's coming at us and it's not necessarily something we can just say, well, I'm not going to do that. But really, how do we look at that? How do we regulate ourselves? And how do we do things and prioritize things that are enjoyable and things that get our creativity going? And really just build that resiliency. And so that was really exciting to be able to provide those to our teachers and have those available. We started those in August and were able to get through them by October. And so now I'm doing a second round of reaching out just to see if anybody else would be interested to continue doing that. Everybody who has attended has says, has said that it has been very helpful and that they've learned quite a bit from that as far as just, you know, things that they can actually apply today, you know, that would really help them with managing that stress.
And Stephanie did a great job. The only piece I'll add to that is I'm very thankful to serve in a district where not only are we taking great care of our students, but also our staff. And also a thank you to Mr. McMichael. Recently, we just extended or added hours on for our mental health therapist at our wellness center to serve our staff members and our teachers and I'm very thankful for that. So thank you to Mr. McMichael also.
Thank you both.
Well, I believe we're ready for, is it Justin Ferguson?
Um, John Ferguson.
John, John Ferguson. Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank Stephanie for, for including me in this discussion tonight. And I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to share this program. I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish in the first year of the program. Whenever you have a new program that you're rolling out, particularly when it's a partnership and a collaboration between a lot of different organizations, it, it's hard to get that momentum going sometimes. And we have not, we haven't experienced that in this program, at least from a treatment perspective. So I'm excited to share a little bit about what we've done. I do want to read this quote really quick because I think it encapsulates so perfectly the spirit and the philosophy of school-based behavioral health programming. Successful and sustainable school mental health systems do more than co-locate services within the school building. They seek to integrate partners seamlessly so that the diverse complement of mental health supports and services are tightly coordinated to meet the student body's needs efficiently and effectively. Working directly with community partners broadens the availability of potential supports that can be available to students and families, enhancing access to mental health care. So let me, let me kind of break that down a little bit. For, for us, there's kind of four guiding principles as we looked at building and sustaining this program. The first one is that we want to have high-quality care. And you get that by hiring licensed staff who have gone to school and received, you know, excellent training to, to have the skills and have the experience and have the knowledge to be able to provide mental health support to students. You want to hire experienced staff, staff who have done this work, who understand how to engage students and families. You also want to make sure that you provide curriculum so that it's an evidence-based process and, and treatment program so that there's some intentionality behind it. And then you want to continue to develop your, your professionals. So this is, this is a component that we looked at obviously when we were building the program, but it's, it's really an, an important component of sustaining the program as well. A strong multidisciplinary team is really critical for the success of school-based programming. So not only do we have our Ascension St. Vincent counselors, we have bachelor's-prepared behavioral health techs who provide skills. We've got prescribers that can prescribe medication, but we really see our team as much larger than that. And so we're going to be working with the school social workers and the school counselors. We're going to be working with the school nurses and the SROs so that we can collaborate around what are the needs that the, that our students have and how can we best meet those needs. And then the third guiding principle is that spirit of collaboration. And that's, that's really the component that I think is, is that magical component that makes this partnership so strong. In, in many mental health interventions or treatments, you take your child to an office, it may be located 30 minutes away, you've got to wait with your child. They're going to get great care and then you take them back to the school. There may be very little collaboration between that professional and what happens in our school-based program. In a school-based program, we can talk daily with the school social worker. We can talk with the teacher frequently. Certainly, parents are a lot more involved in school-based programming because parents are involved in schools a lot more and available. So that's, that's really a critical component in making, making this program successful. We have dedicated time that we set aside to, to work with teachers, school administrators, school social workers so that we can really provide the best care to our students. Probably the most important guiding principle though of this program is that it's student and it's parent-driven. There are a lot of services that we can offer. We can offer skill support in the classroom, outside the support or outside the classroom. We can provide individual therapy, group therapy, family therapy. There are a lot of different services that we can provide. It's really going to be the parent and the student saying, this is what's going to work for me and for my family. Obviously, I'm going to protect, you know, private information, but we had a student recently that I was talking with one of our counselors about who got services last year for about three months in the spring. And this is a child who had severe anxiety. Every day it was a fight to get the student to school. The mother, the father, they were really wiped, you know? And there were lots of physical symptoms, upset stomach, headaches. This kid was really kind of pulling in and not making a lot of those social connections. And so the school social worker talked with the parent and said, hey, we have this program. Would you be interested in maybe talking with one of our counselors to see if this might be a good fit for you? So the parent spoke with our counselor, got the child into services. We started doing some individual therapy. We connected the child with one of our skills techs who could do some classroom work, some skills work. And we, we kept seeing these incremental changes. You know, school got a little bit easier to engage. Test-taking wasn't as anxiety-provoking. At the end of the school year, the family decided, hey, you know, we're going to take the summer off. We, we can see families and students in the summer, but this family decided to take a break. Well, about three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, that student, you know, came down the hallway and she was checking in with her counselor who she, she hadn't met with since May and shared with her how well she was doing. And she said, I enjoy coming to school now. I look forward to coming to school now and I've made a new friend. And so that's really, I, I loved, I love that story because I think it's a great example of what can happen when you've got the parent and the student and the community and the school system really partnering together to provide these services. It's also a great example of it doesn't have to be an enormous intervention. This kid did not need two years of intensive therapy to meet their need. Within a few months, they were able to engage some conversations and build a relationship where they were able to make those advancements. So that's, that's, that's one example of some of the work that we're doing. To get into a little bit of the program operations, the referral process comes through the school social worker. And so when the school or when a parent identify a student who might benefit from services, they'll have a conversation and then the school social worker will then work with our team to make that linkage and to make that referral. We also want to be open to, you know, families and students might need different resources. And so part of that assessment, part of that screening is to really find out what services are going to be best for that student. Is it going to be school-based work or would it be beneficial to link that student with something outside in the community? That's really a conversation between the parent and the school counselor to kind of determine what makes the most sense. Also during this time, we talk about insurance and benefits. You know, everybody has different types of insurance and insurance will cover different things. And so one of the things we found over the last year is that we really do want to spend time with the family, talking with them about what their insurance will cover because that's, that's how we fund these services for the most part. Also, we talk about medication service linkage. So currently we have about 20% of our students who are connected with an Ascension prescriber. And so it's within this referral and intake process that we explore if that's something that could be helpful to the student. And then school placement and coverage. Currently, all of our schools have Ascension staff, counseling staff located in, in those schools. And we're really proud of this because I think when we started the program, we weren't sure how quickly we would be able to cover all of our schools. And so over the course of the year, as we've hired in new staff and, and placed them in schools, it's really been a priority to make sure that at some level, every school would have some coverage. And then consistent ascension in school meetings. You know, it's, it's very important that, you know, we're collaborating with our school partners. And so many of our, many of our teams will talk daily, they'll have daily huddles or they'll have weekly meetings or they'll have monthly meetings where they can collaborate and talk about the needs of the student. And then we're in a constant state of program assessment and development. And so we're always kind of looking at, you know, are the interventions that we're providing effective and really meeting the needs of our students? And if we need to make changes, we can do that. Here, here's a few pieces of data that I'd like to share. Currently, since the program began, we've served over 400 students. We've served over 4,400 therapy sessions since students and families began. And actually this morning, knowing that I'd be coming to the board meeting, I, I wanted to get the most up-to-date information. We've, we provided over 5,000 therapy services since the program began. That's just in one year. That's, that's a real huge number and I, I don't think when we started a year ago, we really thought we would be able to meet that level of intervention so quickly. We've provided over 3,800 care coordination services. And what these are, these might be skills services where our skills techs are working one-on-one with a student. It also might be collaboration with the parent. So if the parent wants some information or wants to be included in some aspect of the treatment, that's, that's what's included here as well. I mentioned 20% of our active students are receiving medication services through Ascension prescribers. And we have a great linkage process to make sure that if a student could benefit from a higher level of care or medications, we can get them connected quickly. Our staffing, we currently have nine licensed therapists and seven behavioral health techs. We do have some open positions. We have four open positions for licensed therapists, a behavioral health technician, and then we're also looking for a clinical supervisor. Sharing a little bit of our outcomes, you know, when we look at, you know, an assessment of the program, these are some of the things that we look at. So we want to look at functional outcomes. You know, how is the student functioning in school? How's the student functioning in the home? What are some things that they have identified as goals that we can help them achieve? Student and family perception, that's really important to us because from the very beginning, we're sitting down with our students and our families and we're asking them, what are your goals? What do you want to get out of this experience and how can we help you meet that? So these are not goals that are driven by me or a teacher or even a school social worker. These are really goals that are driven by the family and by the student saying, these are the thing, these are the barriers that are in my way and this is what I'd like to focus on. Obviously, grades and attendance are outcomes that we can look at as well. We find that, you know, many of the kids that we're working with, after a period of time in services, you will see an improvement in grades, you will see an increase in attendance. Obviously, that's not the only factor that you want to look at when you're assessing a program, but these are some of the things that we do look at to help us identify the success of the program. And then finally, just some program success and barriers. You know, student feedback, you know, when we talk with students about what is it about this program that you enjoy? You know, we're hearing, I have someplace I can go to to talk about solutions. I have somebody else that I can go to who's a caring person, who I know I can trust. The counselor feedback from our own team members, one of the things that they have noted a lot has been the collaboration with the school system as well as the partnership with the parents. Many of our counselors have years and years of experience working in school-based programs. And very often, the feedback that I get from our counselors is, I've never worked within a, a school system where the parents are more engaged and more involved than ever in this school system. And that's an enormous indicator of success when you're working with a kid. You know, to be able to work with the entire family, to have parents who are engaged, who want to know, who want to be involved, it's a huge indicator of success for our students. So it, it's a, it's a wonderful piece of feedback to get. And then school feedback, I think the feedback that we get from our school counselors and our school partners is that it's nice to have another resource within the walls of the school that we can connect our kids to. It's wonderful that we have a resource within the school where the parent doesn't have to take the kid out and miss school for half a day or an entire day based upon, you know, where that appointment is. You know, often with our appointments, they're 45-minute appointments or maybe 30-minute appointments. You can get the kid, you can provide the service and the kid's back in the classroom doing what they, doing what they need to be doing. So it's, it's wonderful to get that feedback. And then finally, some parent feedback. Another, another story that I want to share with you about a kid that we were serving. This is a kid who actually was doing pretty well in school. However, at home, the parents were really, really struggling. Both parents are professionals, take a lot of pride in the work that they do, work very- Both parents are professionals, take a lot of pride in the work that they do, um, work very hard, very, very busy people. And they started having these conversations with, um, some of their teacher partners about, I just, I, I don't feel effective as a parent. I feel like I'm, I'm not giving my kid all that they need. And I'm really worried about how it might impact my, my daughter in, in school. So the school social worker, the teacher, they, they, they said, well, hey, why don't you talk to one of our counselors and see if that might be something that's beneficial? And so, uh, one of our counselors, they, they started working with this family. And very quickly they moved from doing some individual work with the, the student to doing some family work. And two weeks ago, the, the dad called our counselor and said, you know, I want to tell you, they, they were doing some, some structured reward system at home and some positive reinforcement and, and doing, doing some things at home. And the dad said, I just want to give you feedback that for the first time in a long time, I'm actually enjoying being a parent and I feel like I'm pretty good at it. And this was something that they hadn't been feeling for a very long time. And so they, they wanted to pass this along. Challenges to our program. So I think workforce shortages is definitely something that we think about and we talk about a lot. We do have open positions. Um, I think nationwide, we know that there are workforce challenges. And so we're always trying to look at creative ways to make sure that we have the staff that we need to be able to provide the services that we want to provide to our students. So that's definitely something that, you know, we're thinking about and talking about a lot. And then the other challenge is just insurance and reimbursement. Um, there are lots of different insurance payers. And some insurance payers, you know, have really great mental health benefits. And then others may have high deductible plans or they might be out of network or there might be a lot of rules around reimbursement. And so one of the things that we've really discovered that I think coming into the program, I probably didn't realize I would be spending as much time talking about and educating about insurance as we have. But it, you know, it's well worth the effort because when you are able to kind of work through those barriers and get the kid into services, get them the services that they need, um, it's, it's really great to see kind of what can happen for our kiddos. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, to take them.
Well, John, thank you for being so thorough. I will open up the floor to questions and then I have a couple myself.
I guess first a comment. I'm, I'm really excited that we've got coverage of all our schools. I know when we started this process, we were trying to lay reasonable expectations out there. So to me, that's great news. Um, and, and then second of all, I, I just really want to thank John and Stephanie, Dave Woodward, Dr. Beresford, um, all of our staff because this is an important thing. And I really also want to thank our community who supported the school safety referendum, which is a key driver in allowing us to do that. So, um, and I know, John, you said about parent involvement. We have an awesome community here, um, and it shows with their willingness to pay and it shows with their willingness to be involved. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, John, one of my questions has everything to do with, um, I guess the workforce challenges. And for our students, consistency with a therapist and a counselor is very beneficial. So I'm wondering, what does that look like? What has our turnover been? And have we been able to be successful with having a, a reliable resource for our students?
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's definitely been a challenge because, you know, I think, um, we, we have not been a hundred percent fully staffed yet. We've been close, but what that has meant has been we, we've kind of been required to, to shift some of our staff to different schools or instead of maybe just being at one school, you know, our staff are split between a couple of schools. Um, and so, you know, you, you do have to be, you know, communication is the key when the, when those kind of, when, when you have those challenges. Because you need to make sure that the school social workers are aware of who's coming into the building. You know, what are their needs? Um, how are they going to be working with, with the, the kids? We did a lot of planning going into this fall year because, um, we knew, we had had a little bit of turnover over the summer and we kind of anticipated that we might have a little bit of turnover in the fall. That's not uncommon. And so we really wanted to kind of think through, how do we get people placed in schools where we're not going to have to worry about if, if we have a hole or if we have an opening that we're not going to have coverage? Um, and so one of the ways that we've done that is we have multiple staff at all the schools. So we have a skills tech at all the schools. And then we also have counselors who are covering, covering all the schools. And so in the schools where we have had turnover, we've often had a behavioral health tech who's been there to kind of provide some of that consistency between the program and the school. It doesn't happen a hundred percent of the time, um, but we're really trying to, once we've identified a counselor for a specific school, we really want to keep them there. Um, because they, they learn the culture of the school. They learn the staff. They build those relationships with not only ki, the kids, but, but the team at the school. And so we, we don't want to constantly move people around, um, so that, that you have to go back and relearn that relationship.
Thank you. Louise?
Yes, so, um, how are you ensuring you have diverse staff to support a diverse student body?
That's right. So that's, that is a great question. And I think, um, Ascension, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion is, is a value that is, is really strong at Ascension. It's built into their policies and practices. It's built into their, their HR makeup. And so whenever we have a position that's open, you know, that's, that's something that we're looking at. Um, we've got a bilingual counselor. We could use more bilingual counselors because, um, you know, we, we have a lot of kids and families who could really, um, benefit from having that, that relationship and certainly families that are bilingual. Um, I think that's, that's something that we're looking at as well to make sure that we're inclusive.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Katie?
Um, mine's really just a comment. I'm so thankful, this is a ton, so much work. And it, I mean, it happened years ago. I love it when we were just as a board talking, you know, our strategic plan land, which we're going to talk about more, um, tonight too, about how this was important to us as a district. And, you know, we may have started getting the ball rolling, but then it was like the administration and then Stephanie, your team. And, um, it was, it's just so amazing to be able to see it all to come to fruition. And when I, when I see those numbers and I hear those great stories, you know, if it was just, if it just helped one kid or just one family, like all of it was worth it. And I know that there's so many more than just that one. So thank you so much for all the time effort that everyone's put into this. Cause our families and our students and staff are definitely seeing the results. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I think it really does speak to this community though, because, I mean, you can, you can refer a kid to a counselor, social worker out in the community. You can, you can put counselors in schools and, and refer students to go see them. But if you don't have the entire community kind of rallying around and supporting this, um, you're not, you're not going to have the success that we've seen. And one of the things that I'm very grateful for is that in all of our schools, you know, the, from the school principals to the social workers, they've, they've really shown a commitment, not just in their words, but in their actions. They've welcomed the program. They've supported the program. They've marketed the program. It's really clear that they see this as a value to the students. Um, and, and that's, that's really been a real key component of its success.
Thank you very much. Dr. Beresford, do you have any follow-up?
I'd just like to kind of echo some of the words of the board, but this is a dream come true. I mean, I remember my first interview with Carmel Clay Schools School Board. It was, talked to us about mental health. And, uh, and also, uh, you know, like Mike had mentioned, the, the school safety referendum, our community said, yeah, we want to, to support our kids this way. And then to hear the number of kids that have been, I mean, what was it? 5,000 sessions? And one of the big, um, one of the big, biggest benefits from this program is it reduces the barriers uh, to, to kids getting the help they need. And, uh, because they, what you described, John, was that, you know, they don't have to leave school, go someplace else. And, and of course, this is just an option for parents to use. But same time, it's, it's a very, it's a lot simpler. And I think the consistency of, of the help that the kids get with their sessions, this is fantastic. If you would have asked me, do you think this would be going full force, helping every building in 2021? I would have said, I don't know. That's pretty, you know, that's pretty ambitious. This has been going on all year. And so, uh, um, big kudos to both of you because you, you can't do that without a partnership that works and a collaborative partnership that works. Uh, also I'd just like to, uh, you know, the, the front end, what Stephanie talked about. It's been a lot of hard work to get everything coordinated, uh, to, to address the needs of the whole child and to get the training and the, and the pieces, all the pieces together. And, uh, and that ended up being a great hire. Uh, she went to work in a hurry and, uh, and got so many things going to support our kids. And, um, uh, you know, that whole, um, you know, kind of wraparound services that finding kids, what do they need and how do we get it to them? And, uh, and how we can coordinate our efforts so that we don't, we have some consistency across the district. Not a good thing here and a good thing there, a good thing there, but we, we have some consistency. It's not a, a simple task. And, uh, saying, I just really appreciate the work that's been done to the benefit of our kids. And I know I use this word a lot and I'm going to use it some more, uh, tonight. But, uh, uh, one of the things you look at as a, as an educational institution is that, um, what are the barriers to engagement? Uh, we have a great educational program. And the only thing that can keep a kid from, from growing is to not engage. And not all of our kids are engaged. And so that's a constant, you know, constant thing is how do we keep engaging our kids? Well, mental health services, uh, learning skills, um, things that may not be academic, but by learning, you know, how to calm yourself, all of a sudden you're calm and you can engage back into the educational program. So it's all pieces together so kids can learn and grow and, uh, and be good people. And so, uh, I just really appreciate that this work's been done. What a great, uh, what a great workshop where we got to see a lot of the different pieces. And, uh, so if you look at these guys and you wonder why they look tired? They've been getting after it. And, uh, and that last piece I would just add is that, um, this has been done over two years of a global pandemic. And, uh, and we had no idea when we went on this journey or this adventure that, uh, that this would happen. And what a need became apparent. And we were so thankful that we had some pieces in place to, uh, to help our kids that way. I also talked to you a little bit about, um, one of the things we have to watch is recovery. Because, uh, you know, we, we know when the stresser leaves, when this pandemic's finally over with, the stress doesn't leave with it. Um, you know, we'll still have to, some work to do. So I love the things that Stephanie's been doing with the, the staff. And, uh, even our T-shirt, which was, uh, let's root for one another and watch us grow. A beautiful picture of a tree and, uh, and just those types of things where we just care for one another, care for our kids, care for our families. And, uh, and John picked up on the secret sauce of Carmel Clay Schools, which is, uh, active, engaged parents, uh, highly, highly, uh, trained professional staff with big minds and big hearts. And then, uh, and then the greatest, greatest bunch of kids you'll ever, you know, ever hope to meet. So, uh, and, uh, that's just pretty inspiring. So I really appreciate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, well, Dr. Beresford, we jump to you for our Carmel Clay School strategic plan update.
All right. Well, typically we would do our strategic plan in the summer, you know, a summer retreat or sometimes I would like to call them advances because we don't like to go backwards, like go forwards. But, um, you know, a lot of things going on. And, uh, we're, we're finally to a point where we can, uh, share some. I will call this, uh, the first draft of the three-year plan. And, uh, and I would love to take, uh, you know, the, you know, credit for all the stuff that I'm going to share with you tonight. But I actually have to give that credit away right away to our, um, you know, to the three people that side of me and another three or four, uh, that aren't here tonight. And, uh, what I wanted to do, um, tonight was to give you a really, a, a brief, a pretty quick and brief look at some components that we're looking at for our next, uh, three-year plan. And, um, what I asked the team to do was to give me, uh, you know, what are we can finishing up on? Cause this is year one. And then, uh, also what are we looking at in the near future? And what are, what are your dreams, uh, for the, you know, for the, the third year? Uh, I like three-year, um, strategic plans because I think once you get out four or five years, it can get out so far that we, we can't focus in very tight. So what I did was I asked, uh, I asked, uh, all my teammates here to, to make us a slide in their different divisions. And then I asked them, like, tell me your why. Tell me the, you know, in the context of where, what you're thinking on these. So we're going to start out with, um, with our curriculum instruction. And, uh, I've got Amy driving over there. So, um, she's going to probably determine the speed of this presentation because she's got the power of the button. But, uh, we'll start with, um, with curriculum instruction and, uh, and start with just the why. And that's that Carmel Clay Schools needs to prepare our students for the future. If we're going to break it down to one sentence, one big rock, that's, that's our job. Our students need to be prepared for jobs that haven't been created. They're going to need to tackle societal challenges that we can't even imagine. And they need, they're going to need to use technologies that probably haven't been invented yet. So we'll need to equip our students to thrive in this interconnected world where they seek to understand and appreciate different perspectives, different worldviews, interact respectfully with others, take responsible actions, uh, towards sustainability and wellbeing. And then finally, we want to ensure that all students have a rigorous and differentiated learning opportunities to meet their individual needs and have the necessary knowledge, skills and abilities to be college and/or career ready to be successful in the future. So that's a very well-stated thing, but it's a very difficult task to, 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 to do. But, um, I think we've got the staff that can do that. So let's look at the, the, the big rocks, uh, from, um, from our CIA group. And the first one is literacy. And we've had some workshops on literacy and, uh, we're, we've got some things to finish off there. Uh, but the main bullets under literacy is just to engage our students in explicit systematic instruction. And then here's the big, big PHs. Biological awareness, phonemic awareness, uh, and phonics using a multi-sensory approach. Now, I wish I could explain exactly what that means, but, uh, I think I, I, I got a cursory idea of it because I, I know a lot about hooked on phonics. But, uh, really what a lot of that, uh, that, that piece of this is that, um, making sure that our kids are able to read. And, uh, and if they struggle with that, that we are responsive to it. Develop structures for responsive, responsive instruction in literacy. Some of this came out of legislation that was, uh, pointing us to try to identify kids that may have dyslexia. Uh, but what would you say, Amy? It kind of opened the door to really e-engage in the, the science of, of reading. And how can we effectively screen students to see where they are and what they need? And how can we get that to them right away? And, uh, and so, do you have anything else you want to say?
And I would just say yes, just to make sure we're focusing on the foundations of, um, learning to read. So really looking at making sure that they can decode the words. And then they, once they do that, then working on the comprehension piece. But really coming back to the foundation. And that's what those PH words are, those phonological awareness, phonemic awareness and phonics.
And, you know, there, the number one predictor of success in academics is the ability to read. So, uh, this is, uh, the fundamental, most fundamental of, of skills that we have to have move forward. And then of course, providing students with access to high-quality texts that have, are from a broad range of formats and genres that, again, I'll go back to that engagement world, that, uh, when kids see themselves in books, when they see and explore other, you know, cultures or pieces and they can, uh, experience other world pieces. Or when they're just something that's high interest to them, they're going to be more engaged. And, uh, and that's, that's, um, you know, just, just so important. Uh, next big rock is mathematics. And, uh, and here we go. We're going to go on the math program evaluation. And Carmel Clay Schools, this is something I learned, uh, in the last three years, has a rich history in program evaluation. And, uh, that process has put, uh, Carmel at the top of, in, of, of achievement for many, many years. And that math, so the math, uh, program is up for evaluation. Along with that process, we'll be developing the curriculum MABS. Along with that process, we'll be developing the curriculum maps and then working on that coherent, guaranteed, and viable curriculum for all students. So we have some consistency across the board, adopting structural materials that support program evaluation recommendations and the curricular maps. And then provide the professional development to ensure responsive instruction in mathematics. And that responsive instruction again is, you know, when instruction occurs and kids get it, that's not a problem. But when they don't get it, what are we going to do about it? And how we can catch it up? And the next big rock is assessment and grading. So integrating assessments for as and of learning to ensure greater relevance for students. And a lot of times when we think of assistance, excuse me, assessment, you think of grades, A, B, C, D, E, you know, and we don't have any Es anymore, I think. But the grade piece, but assessment is much more than that. Assessment is being able to sort out or understand what you know and what you don't know, and then how do we access what we don't know and learn? So that, that's the assessment part that's, it's very important. And when we talk about responsive instruction, that assessment's what's going to lead us to what do we need to do about it? Amy, anything else you want to add about that? Did I knock, did I nail it? Okay. They're working on me to be a CIA member at some point. We'll see how it goes. And finally, something you've heard us talk about quite a bit, and that is closing the achievement gap. And I really appreciate this approach because we've talked about it quite a bit. And that is to establish a strong data culture that ensures us that the use of data, that we'll use data to inform instruction and planning. And the significance of that is, in education, I think we've collected data for so, so many years. And sometimes we've collected meaningful data and sometimes it hasn't been so meaningful. But the most important piece of data collection is collecting meaningful data. And then how do we get that data in the hands of the people on the ground floor, which should be our teachers? And then, and have them highly trained on using that data in order to make a positive impact on kids. And so, establishing that culture that, you know, this is the data and what we can do it and how we can use that in instruction, how we can do that in planning. Along with that, eliminate gaps in opportunities and access and achievement for all students. So that's, it's introspective look to see, you know, is there anything, any barriers that we have in place that we need to remove in order all kids can achieve? And then assuring that all students have a rigorous academic content and that they have the support they need to be successful in that rigorous, that rigorous comment, content. And so, that is the big rocks, the big fours, literacy, mathematics, assessment, grading, closing that achievement gap in the world of curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So any questions for me or Amy in this juncture? And I know I'm hitting you guys with a lot of information, so, you know, this is going to be an ongoing process. So tonight's just our first step into the pool.
Lots of questions. Where do I start? So one point on there was talking about the math evaluation, evaluating that program. I just wanted to hear a little more detail on how do we evaluate a math program? What's the steps we go through, that kind of thing?
Sure. So as Dr. Beresford mentioned, our program evaluation process is a very rich process that we've used for many years. And we do this every six years for our major programs in the, in our curriculum and instruction division. And so, with our math program evaluation, we start by looking at what are, what is the current practice? What is happening now? We look at the data and we do a, really a deep dive into the data. We look at what are the best practices out there? What does the research say about math instruction? And then also, we do some unpacking of the standards because the Indiana Academic Standards, they change every so often. So the last time they changed were in 2020. So we're, we unpack those standards in this process as well. So this committee is made up of teachers, of parents, of administrators, and at times, students. Typically, we'll have high school students on here as it works for their schedule. And so, we first look at what are those best, what's happening now in our math programming? And then what are the best practices? What needs to happen in our math programming? And then from there, they develop recommendations of what is happening, what needs to happen, and where, where is the gaps? And so, from there, those recommendations are formed. And then those recommendations are used for the next steps of our program evaluation cycle and our curriculum writing and materials adoption. So we look at those recommendations, then they help form the curriculum development of the math programming. And then also looking at the materials adoption of what are those materials that we need to adopt that best support the curriculum and those recommendations made in the math program evaluation. So it's that first step in a series of other processes that we use.
And how long does that evaluation period or process take?
So typically, the evaluation period takes about a year. So we're getting ready to start this in January. And so, we'll start that process this January, we'll go throughout this second semester. And then we bring in the curriculum writing and the materials adoption in the fall, but still working with the program evaluation. And so, then by the next spring, we would be bringing to you recommendations for materials for math to be incorporated in the next school year.
Okay. And then, how do we feel like we're doing with, you know, you're talking about the differentiated learning and just supporting that? How do we feel like we're doing that with our, with, how do we feel like we're doing with that when we look at our class sizes?
Yes. So really, when you're looking at the structures that are in place to really differentiate, it's not necessarily the class size that makes the difference. It's making sure that you have the instructional practices in place to be able to put those structures in place. For example, a math workshop where you might have the students start with a mini lesson, a whole group lesson that may be 10 minutes long. And then you may break into smaller groups. So you may have the teacher working with a small group of students. You may have another group of students that are doing partner work, they're doing collaborative work. And you may have another group of students that's doing individual work. And then you rotate through those different groups. So the class size, I mean, a class size of 50 students, you know, 60 students, that may be a little difficult, especially because the room sizes are not that large. But having a class size in our middle schools, our class sizes 29, 30, 31, 32, that can work. And in our high schools as well, those larger class sizes work. Our elementary class sizes are not typically that large. But it's not necessarily the number of students in the class size, but it's making sure you have the structures in place.
Okay. And the last question I have is, how do we ensure we have a good balance of formative and summative assessments in play for students?
Yes. And so, as you can see on, you know, the strategic plan in the math and then also in the assessment, where we talk about integrating the assessment for, as, and of. So the assessments for would be those formative assessments, those assessments that give feedback to the student as well as feedback to the teacher on how the students are doing and how the teacher might need to change their instruction. So that's that formative assessment piece. The assessment as learning, that's a part where we've not incorporated a lot of that, but that's really where the students are doing some of their own assessments on how are they doing, how are their reflective practice, on how are they learning this? How are they setting goals for themselves? And that's a new area that we'll be looking at. And then that assessment of, that's where the summative assessment comes into play. So the assessment of is how did they learn that? That's the, after the fact, that, you know, final exam, that would be that summative assessment piece. And so, really having that balance and making sure that you're using those assessments for feedback for not only the student, but then also feedback for the teacher. And then how are you tweaking that, the instruction for the teacher and the student on what do we need more of, what do we need less on, what do we need to practice more? And so, it's really finding that balance.
Thank you. With that one, it's near and dear to my heart. I mean, I was a student that learned for the test and then would throw it away. And so, I'm always trying to figure out how to avoid that with my students, you know, my kids, just, so that formative versus, the formative versus summative, I think is, is a way to help with that. Thank you.
It's also a great skill to have because that's the way we operate. We, none of us are perfect and in our profession, I bet we probably go down the whole line here and find, and talk about how to get a little bit better, you got to get feedback, you got to make changes and you got to, you know, to get improved that way. So it's pretty solid. Okay. Moving on, oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else?
So we were talking, for the math program, during the program evaluation, I'm wondering if you recognize that there's a significant gap, do we pivot and do something about that immediately? Or do we wait until this comes full cycle and we have new textbooks and we have an adoption? I mean, how do we approach that if situations pop up during a program evaluation?
So where you're referring to is significant gap in?
Either in the way material is being taught, in what the students are learning, or maybe some of the instructions, there's just something, I don't know, but there's a gap that is noted in the evaluation.
Right. So we don't wait for all, you know, we're continuously improving. So in all of our programming, we have, we do have, every six years, we have our different program evaluation pieces. However, we continue to look at our practices, reflect on those practices, and then make tweaks to those practices all along. So if we're seeing that, you know, we're having an area in a certain course, say Algebra One, where our kids are really having a difficult time learning specific concepts. And that's part of that PLC process or that professional learning communities process, where they're looking at, how are our kids doing? And I noticed that Mr. McMichael's kids are doing much better on this skill. What are you doing to help teach them that, that I need to incorporate with my students? Because my students may not be doing as well. And so, that's that continuous learning piece. So it's not just waiting until that program evaluation piece, but it's continuously looking at our practice and how do we get better at that? But the program evaluation process allows us to take pause and look at all of the components of it. And so, it, so that makes you sure that we're not missing one piece and not just tweaking and just, you know, going in a lot of different directions. We want to be able to align those arrows.
My second question on the assessment and grading. In some of our classes, or actually some of the grade levels, it's not A, B, C, it's mastery and?
Standards-based.
Yes, there you go. Thank you. Standards-based. I know some schools like MIT use some standards-based, which I find fascinating and challenging at the same time. What are your thoughts? Is this something that we're looking to do across the board? I know my student, my children, some of their classes at the high school were standards-based. But then, at the end, they actually received a grade. I'm not sure how that all works. So if you could just touch on that, that would be helpful.
Sure, sure. So really, all of our grades are standards-based because our curriculum is based on the Indiana Academic Standards. And then you're looking at, our grades are criteria and reference. So how are our students doing compared to the standard? Now, the difference is, in the elementary school, we call them standards-based report cards, and the students receive a one, two, three, four, or five on very specific standards. At the high school or at the middle school, like you're referring to maybe in science class, there might have been a class where they're saying, okay, here's the grade and the way the teacher shared the feedback on the grade was, this is how you did on this specific standard, this is how you did on this specific standard. But then all of those indicators were then put into a grade, you know, an A, B, C, D, or F grade. So it's just the, the reporting of it is how are you looking at as far as mastery towards that standard and reporting that? But it's really, they're all based on the standards. We're not necessarily looking to change the way we're reporting the standards in, when we get to middle school or high school. That's not something right now that we're looking at. I'm not saying it would never, ever happen, but right now, that's not what we're looking at. But it's really, how are we making sure that the grades are reflective of what the students are learning and not reflective on other practices such as their responsibility, that they turned in their assignments on time? Or that they did other pieces that really don't have tie into the grade itself? There is a way, we do want to report that out, you know, how do they work collaboratively in a group? But that shouldn't go into the grade as far as the learning part of it. And so, we want to make sure the grades are truly reflecting what the student has learned. And then also share information on how the students might be learning, but not as part of the grade.
Yeah, I thought that was well articulated in the, in the second bullet point under assessment and grading. So it's to accurately communicate what students have learned. And really, whether it's a one, two, three, four, five, or an A, B, C, that's trying to communicate what the student has learned. And then we have to make sure that we are, we as parents and educators understand, what does that letter mean? So, good. Ready to move forward? All right. Next, we're going to go into human resources. So as I go through this, maybe you can hear the voice, you know, of the, of the person around it, but go ahead and pop that slide. And so, you look at the big rocks there. And Carmel Clay Schools has the absolute, has the absolute finest teachers, administrators, and support staff that serve our over 16,000 students. It's critical to continue to recruit, hire, develop, and retain a diverse and premier workforce in order to serve our students, families, and the community at the highest level. Our students deserve the best and Human Resources Team, in partnership with our building leaders, will strive to attract and retain the most qualified, supportive staff in the state. We are in a challenging time and we've well noted that with respect to hiring classified staff members during labor shortage, it's always important to look at creative ways to attract employees to the district, especially now in the areas of transportation, food service, edicare, and substitute teachers. So with that, we'll go to the three big rocks from our Human Resources Team. And the first one, of course, is staffing. And I've always, often said this, is that the most important thing we do is, is to, you know, attract and hire the best teachers that we can find. And the best, every, every person that touches a student, we have to have a very, very high-quality person. We have to continue to professionally develop that individual and then make that environment that, you know, the very best that that point of contact can be. And to do that, it's just, it's just imperative that we get high-quality individuals. And we're fortunate because we do have a lot of good candidates that want to teach at Carmel Clay Schools. But with, you know, with the shortage, the teacher shortage, and it's not going away and it's not getting better, we have to, we have to look creatively, creatively and look at different ways on how we can do that. And they've got some great, great strategies. So we'll start with the first one, staffing, both certified and classified. And this is some exciting things for me as a former HR, student services guy, but partnerships with universities. And under that cultivating teacher pipelines, and what that really means is, let's go to student-teacher level, bring in the most talented student teachers we can find and then teach them the Carmel way and hopefully keep them and find the best of the best as they're developing. One of the things that we've been looking for is to have more teachers that look like our students. And teacher recruiting historically back, black colleges and universities might be a way to do that. So how do we form relationships there? And again, maybe it'll be the student-teacher pipeline as well as the teacher pipeline. Then, you know, having, when we go into non-classified, look at things kind of out of the box, like when we had our drive-a-bus event where we were targeting, where we, you know, brought that, you know, the buses out and I got to drive one for the first time in my career and found out it's not that hard. And we had quite a few folks, probably our best hiring in the summer ever, I think, was our, at the end result of that. Of course, we lost a lot too, but, but that was a great event. And then also targeting messages to the candidates. In other words, instead of posting and hoping, actually going to what's in our candidate pool right now, let's target them right away and ask them, here's some openings. And we found some success that way too. Talent development, onboarding evaluation is, once we get a talented individual on our, on our roles, how do we? how do we grow that talent? And part of that's through an evaluation system. But I've said this before, but you know, when the state moved to the, a more prescriptive, what I'd call a raider system of evaluation, I think it really was a step backwards. Now, we've had some relief from that. And looking more at a talent development type evaluation model, which is more motivational and actually focuses on specific skills that can be a much more, much more positive experience for our, for our employees, but also can grow skills quicker and better. And then enhanced and efficient onboarding processes for new employees. So, and that's one area that's grown a lot in the last couple of years. They've really put together a lot of different pieces to, to get folks on the team and getting the, the information that they need immediately. And then to set that, that professional growth and professional development in, in process. And that's pretty exciting too. And then the final piece was the working with our teachers association, Carmel's Teacher Association, and keeping that relationship strong. We have an amazing relationship with our teachers association. And I can't speak any more highly of that. It's, you know, they are colleagues, work very closely together. And the most descriptive thing I can say about it is that everybody at the table wants the best for kids. And, and so that's pretty special. And I don't think you find that everywhere. So, so that's the, the big rock for Human Resources. And we'll take a pause here if you want to ask any questions.
Hey, I got some questions. Okay. Easiest question first. So Roger, I think I alluded to this before, so I'm just gonna ask it one, I can't say last time, another time. Can we survey our bus drivers to find out what motivates them and how we can do a better job of recruiting them? That's a direct question. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. What is to stop us from actually doing it since we can?
I don't know that there's anything stopping us. I think it would be something that would come out of HR. As they both, when we, and we do some of this now, I know, I don't, Tom would be able to be more specific. But when, when employees leave, for example, that we, we do exit interviews and gain insight. And also, as we, we do talk to our drivers, they have, they have at least an informal representation. And so there is dialogue. It's not as formal as with the CTA, but, but, but they do, we do talk to drivers and, and get feedback from them on all sorts of things, including, you know, what they feel would, would attract drivers. And some of that came out and was reflected in, in the new agreement that we have with the drivers.
Yeah, I'd like to see some exhaustive feedback from them to just ensure that they have the opportunity to share any, you know, ideas and thoughts for how we can address this challenge with getting more bus drivers. Because my heart, I mean, it breaks when I see the long lines of traffic and I'm driving my son to drop him off. And I want to drop him off down the streets, but I have to sit in the traffic. Like, and then it's getting cold. And so my heart is still like aching at the idea of my kids having to ride their bikes or parents being inconvenienced, you know, in that one mile radius. So I just, anything that we can do to change the game, I'm like open to that. So I'd love to know a follow-up on what we're gonna do in terms of at least getting input from them or looking at modeling or looking at other districts outside of the state that are doing it well and retaining and attracting additional drivers. And just if there's strategies they're putting into play, I would just love to know that we've kind of done that research and found some.
Well, I think we have already. We certainly talked to our counterparts in other school districts. This is a common theme throughout the state and throughout the nation, as you know. And so we have, we do interact on a local level as well as a state level. And in some cases, we also interact outside of the state. I don't, I don't believe there's something that somebody's doing out there that's kind of a silver bullet that we're not aware of. Because if we weren't, we may, we haven't gathered all that information just ourselves. But I mean collectively, with all the Transportation Administration around the state, locally and around the state, I really doubt that there's anything that we're missing as far as somebody coming up with something that we haven't, you know, aren't doing or haven't thought of. In some cases, we've been recognized for being one of those districts that has employed some, you know, creative thinking in, in recruiting drivers.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I think we're doing a great job. I mean, in talking to some of our bus drivers, they really appreciate how we take care of our buses and how we take care of them. I'm just wondering what we can do that's outside of the box, even if it's the way that we are financing to pay for that position? And if we can switch that up to better compensate? I mean, I, I'm speaking for Louise, not the whole board. Like, I just wanna kind of push the envelope on that.
Louise, before you jump off of that, one thing I failed to mention is these are the big rocks. And then once we establish and we're all tight on what our, you know, what our big areas are that we're gonna focus on. And then the next section of that is what strategies are we gonna do to try to make those big rocks happen? So the idea of surveying the bus drivers or any, any of those things would fall under our strategy as part of the, of the planning process. And I'm glad you said that because I should've said that starting to fail to.
Thank you, thank you. And looking at building our staff, recruiting, kind of our recruiting strategy and methodologies, are we looking at how we're building our bench with IAs?
Absolutely. And one of our best recruiting tools that we have is working with our instructional assistants. Over, Roger did a recent study, over a third of some of our recent teachers have been IAs with us. And so one of the pieces that we do is we have an internal teacher recruitment fair that is just with our instructional assistants as well as our student and our student teachers. And so each and every year, we have that recruitment fair. And it yields a high number of teachers that we currently have in the district.
Thank you. That was my next question. What was our conversion rate? So you said about 33%?
Yes.
And then, do we, do we gauge or do we assess our student experience in preparing for developing our teachers, that kind of thing? Do we evaluate the student experience in classes at any level?
Not sure I'm tracking with you. What, are you asking if we're surveying students on how?
Their, what their experience is?
What their perception of their classroom is?
What their experience in the classroom is, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many of those we do. That'd probably be more under Dr. Dudley's area.
Well, so just recently, we did a survey with our students. And some of the questions were, does your, you know, how does your teacher, how do you connect with your teacher? So does your teacher help you? Does your, you know, what, what other things, you know, do you feel like your teacher cares about you? How, how are you connecting with your teacher? And so that's a survey that we did do some questions on that teacher-student relationship and how the student might get help with the teacher? Or do they feel like they have an adult in the building that is somebody that they can reach out to? And so we did do some surveying on those pieces that were specific to the student-teacher relationship.
Thank you.
Substitutes, I'm assuming that's part of that classified strategy that will be coming? Because I know that's the sore spot right now.
Absolutely. And we've been doing better with substitute teachers and have put in, put in many strategies in place and working very closely with Kelly Hackett and the team. And we continually bring new substitutes on board. But one of the things about substitutes, it's a, it's a trickle-down effect. When you mention IAs, you mention substitutes. So when our teachers go on maternity leaves, oftentimes the IAs who have their teaching license will fill those maternity leave positions. And then the substitutes may become the IAs and then we're refilling. So it is cyclical and we continue to do our best with populating our substitute teachers. And we're also looking at strategies for that too, absolutely.
All right, we're moving on to business, finance, and facilities. And it looks like Roger's already warmed up, so we're, we're good to go. I tell you, I, I'm real proud of the work that Roger and his team has done. First off, with their comprehensive financial plan. And he's provided, him and his team have provided a financial planning model that can be modified as different needs arise and priorities change. So, you know, it's not a locked-in pieces because you don't know. I wanted to steal the line was, that Roger shared the other day was that sometimes programming can make a facility obsolete before the actual facility needs to be, you know, is having any issues. Because programs change and you have to be nimble and, and keep a capacity to be able to react to the, the situations that we were come up upon. And there's never been a better example of that than as we went through this pandemic. We had to do a lot of pivoting. Also, you'll see, and you were very well, I mean, here about a lot, is the capital improvement plan. And that allows school corporation leaders to identify when and how projects will be addressed. And then they have to prioritize those needs. Also, it enhances the budgeting process, enables school corporation leaders to determine appropriateness of debt issuance and/or cash on hand. So we have to, they, that balancing act about having a, a cash balance that's favorable to bonds, but also managing debt and keeping that, you know, that tax level. When coupled with a comprehensive financial plan, the CIP helps school corporation leaders identify funding sources available for projects while maintaining a balanced budget and meeting the reserve and tax rate targets. And then finally, the third big rock has to deal with continued development expansion of the culture of well-being. So employee well-being is essential to provide an exemplary educational program. In other words, we have to take care of our people because they take care of our kids. Improving the health and welfare, wellness of employees and their dependence minimizes healthcare expenses, thus providing more financial resources to support the educational program. So kind of the double, the double edge on that is that by supporting our folks and helping them to be well in the different areas, we also, it also saves us money and, which makes more money available. So it's a, it's a good, a good plan that is comprehensive advantages if it's done as well. When you look at our slide here, big rock is the long-term financial plan. And of course, when you're working, working with finance, you're gonna have some numbers. So, so the big rock is that Carmel Clay will maintain a minimum of 8% cash balance reserves in the educational operating referendum ready-to-funds with a goal of building a 12% cash balance reserve. And so I know we've talked about that before. And the advantage to, to that is a lower, you know, bond rate, which we've experienced some real, some real advantages to that, saving the taxpayers a lot of money. Also continuing to maintain that level of tax rate. And, and that's where the magic, I wouldn't call it magic, but it's really strategy to how we manage money to be able to keep that tax rate level. And then maintain the district's outstanding debt at a level not to exceed 3% of the gross assessed valuation of the school corporation. Annual debt service does not exceed 15% of the total operating expenses. And the net direct debt per capita not to exceed $2,000 unless approved by the Board of School Trustees. Those are all metrics that the state requires, correct, to manage debt. And, and so we have to follow those rules tightly. From there, I'll bounce down to continued development, excuse me, comprehensive facilities plans. I'll go to the right there. Still, facilities can be, become programmatically obsolete before they become physically obsolete. So there's that line that I was so impressed by. And thus, facilities must be maintained both physically and programmatically at the highest level to support the educational program. And you can see that there's a lot of that going on around us. And touching a lot of facilities that haven't been touched since 1993 or when our student population was much smaller. And so a lot of good, good projects going on and more to come. And then finally, in response to need, increase mental health and physician services wellness center. I think Dr. Ostrich mentioned that and that Mr. McMichael has authorized some increased hours. I think we increased our capacity about 33% so that we can handle and meet the needs of our employees. Increase participation at the wellness center by a minimum of 5%. So we're gonna try to bump up the number of folks, you know, working out and going through the programming there. And then increase the participation in fitness classes a minimum of 10%. And then expand the financial wellness services with a goal of reducing student debt by a million dollars. So we, he added that, was that last year or COVID years? I don't know. It might've been two years ago. But we added, beat the planner and, and access, free access for our employees to, to seek financial wellness, which is also a big cause of stress in a lot of people's lives. And so, and one of their direct goals is we have a lot of teachers that have a lot of student debt. And how can we get some of that debt forgiven and, and with a lot of programming that's out there that they can access? So good, good, solid, balanced plan. And with that, I'll pause and take any questions.
I just have a comment is to direct the public's view to that third bullet point up there at the top. I think that that is something that I know that we strive very hard is to continue to maintain a level tax rate. I think we're slightly biased, but I believe that we not only live in one of the greatest school districts, but also one of the greatest cities. And one of those reasons is because we do have such a great tax rate. And I know that as a school board, we, and as administration, we work really hard to make sure that stays that way. So, thank you for making that a priority.
That's because Roger talks about every, every school board meeting. You guys get the, get the scoop every time. We're gonna move into student services now. And, and really, our student services, you know, why remains the same, which is Carmel Clay Schools seeks to establish a safe, non-threatening learning environment that addresses students' academic, social, emotional, and physical needs. So Student Services continues continuously working to lead the development implementation of a safe learning environment for our children. And, and some of these, you'll see, we're, we're finishing up on some of our, our previous goals, which is the completion of the school's safety referendum goals. So 2019 was when the, the first school safety referendum was passed in the state of Indiana. And, and with that referendum, the goal of that was to have one highly trained school resource officer in every school district in the district. Adding additional mental health programming for students in every school across the district. Professional development and training for our staff to improve school's safety. And then the hiring of SROs and establishing a partnership with a fully-staffed mental health provider was initially laid out as a three-year plan for implementation with an internal deadline of the fall of 2022. And I'm happy to report that we are on schedule, we're way ahead of schedule with the mental health supports, as you heard tonight. But we are on schedule to, to have an SRO in every building, at least one in every building this coming fall. So the fall of 2022, that promise is completed. So, and that's, and they're echoing Katie, your thoughts. That's our community, that's our, our city, that's our schools. That's all of us together saying, we want this for our kids. And, and it's gonna happen. So, and you can see the increase with the SRO unit this year, there's some really cool stuff going on. And, and that's only gonna get better. And I can't, you know, when you guys, you know, hired me, and I always had the blessing of becoming your superintendent, one of the big charges you had for me was, you know, how can we make our schools as safe as we possibly can? And, and when I think about then and now, we've come so far. And of course, well, it's, it's a never-ending process and it's our priority every morning. But I'm very happy with the way things have, have come, come out so far. The second big bullet is something we alluded to a little bit earlier, which is COVID-19 recovery. And since the onset of the global pandemic, schools worked to provide education stability to students while grappling with the ever-changing requirements for contact tracing and quarantines that impacted both staff, students, resulting in increased behavioral and mental health issues, which you heard a little bit about tonight. Student service staff will navigate supports and resources for staff and students in the post-pandemic environment. So a little bit about, similar to what I, I talked about. But at this point in time, as you can tell, if you've been monitoring our, our data, our COVID data every week, I think we've had our eighth week of single-digit. I think we've had our eighth week of single-digit positive cases at high school level. And I think we're like six or seven in a row for the middle school, but our elementary cases continue to bounce up and down and up and down. We actually lost a whole classroom with, I think maybe six or six kids maybe that were tested positive, 20 were close contact traced. And then, so it made more sense to, to have the teacher teach the class virtually for, for those quarantines. So we're still battling those quarantines. We were fortunate that when the guideline changed, if you have a mask on, you will not have to quarantine. We went from approximately right around 700 probably quarantines a week to drop to under 200, right around 200, just under 200 a week. So, and that's something we really struggled with last year was the number of kids that were quarantined and out and trying to keep up in school that way is very difficult. So anyhow, we've got those pieces and you can, with numbers trending and the new immunizations, I've told the staff that I feel like we're kind of turning a corner, but we're not turning it like this, we're turning it like, like a barge, we're just kind of crawling around the corner. But, but we feel like we're, you know, things are progressing and we're hopeful for, you know, a much different second semester. So there's that piece of it and, and working through those challenges. And then, like I said before, the next step will be what do we need to do to recover once the, we, we get back to the next normal instead of the new normal will be the next normal and then we'll go from there. And then finally, student assistance programming and local agencies and schools within our district have not had a formalized mechanism for effective collaboration. So student services is going to establish a formalized process for increased collaboration and training amongst agencies. And that includes Carmel Clay Schools, the Carmel Police Department, Department of Child Services, and probation with a goal to improve outcomes for students facing adverse life circumstances. So I don't know if you're aware that we do have a probation officers and we allow and give them space in our high school again to keep kids in school so they can have kids that are in those settings, can easily access their probation officer and keep them in class. And then also Department of Child Services works very closely with, of course, the Carmel Police Department and, and we just have a, a lot of different services to wrap around kids. But the goal of the student assistance programming going forward is how can we collaborate together so that everybody knows what everybody's doing and we can surround and kind of wrap around those students to try to, to help them get on a good trajectory moving forward, which is always the goal. And so it's a good goal and it's a, a difficult goal, but we feel like we've gotten a good position to make that happen. So, and with that, I will take any questions you might have? Moving on? Okay. So just for the record, Mr. Woodward's did not have any questions on his, his area. So he's, he's winning the thorough award, right? I'm just, just kidding. Uh, you just, that takes him out.
I want to go to bed too, but just real quick with the COVID-19 piece. If there's any challenges, learning challenges, is that, does that go under the, that rock? Or does that go somewhere else? Meaning if there were any gaps that we've assessed through different scores or whatever or grades in classes, is that under that rock or is it?
No, that would go back to Dr. Dudley and CIA to, to pick up that in their, you know, in their assessment. And, and hopefully, you know, we just had a professional, Dr. Dudley did a really nice presentation to our administrative staff about, we really need to change the, the nomenclature of learning loss because when you think about learning loss, it's like, you know, you knew something and now you don't. But really it's about maybe how you can accelerate learning from the things we've learned, you know, from using some high engagement things with technology and, and really how do we move forward? Now, of course, part of our normal everyday work of a teacher is kids that are behind, how do we catch them back up, you know, and identify those areas, which we talked about earlier. So I think there's some real growth that can happen there. Okay. Moving on? All right, let's talk about technology. And typically, when I talk about technology with you all, I'm talking about the integration because technology works with everybody and they're kind of like, like a support service or, you know, or they're connected to everything. So, you know, we're always talking about what they're doing for all of us and all the different divisions. But actually, we're moving to some things very specific with our strategic plan in regards to technology. And, you know, the fact of it is, is that Carmel Clay School students and staff have access to, to technological resources 24/7, 365 days a year. And that's the environment that we, we work in and live in. So it's our responsibility to ensure that the network that delivers these resources is secure and available to all of our students and staff. So that's, those sometimes can be contradictory. How do you give access to make sure everything's available at that same time? How do we make sure that it's secure? And so we're talking about data security, data integrity, and data availability. So with that, one piece that we're going to continue working on is cybersecurity and continue to harden and strengthen our network environment to protect it against unwanted access. And of course, that's includes everything from phishing to more sophisticated attacks. Always review, you know, the constant review of firewall configurations, implementation of recommendations from MSISAC Association, which is the association that works with cybersecurity and further enhancements to email security, port security, deny unauthorized access, and administrative account review. So all those are pieces on how are we going to keep our, you know, our systems secure? And then we go down to a new thing that I think I've maybe hinted to you a little bit about, but there's a thing, it's basically a certification that you can get called the trusted learning environment. And what that piece is, well, as far as the big rock goes is one of them is that we currently have posted a position to hire a data privacy specialist. So that person would be really focused and not particularly on cybersecurity, but really more about how do we protect student data, staff data? How do we, how do we keep that secure and safe? And so with that, we'd be implementing this process of a trusted learning environment, which is from COSIN, which is another technology leader. And with that, we would develop data privacy, you know, data privacy website. And so, you know, as the world becomes more digital, this is becoming more and more of an issue. I mean, you probably hear a story every night about someone's had their identity still on or they're, you know, they're finding out private information. So how do we protect that and what steps do we need to do to be a trusted learning environment? And this will be a three-year or more process. This is not, sometimes can be, can happen overnight, but it's time for us to begin that journey. And then finally, the communication platform. And of course, that's our website, which is a big part of our information sharing to our, our parents and community. Then reviewing of existing communication products and needs analysis. One of the things that happened with the pandemic is a lot of things were offered for free and, and a lot of folks took them up on that, but we didn't have a good handle on what all was there. And, and so it's really more backtracking and going back with, do we need these things? And what's, what's the most secure way to accomplish the educational goals of that? So any questions with that? Moving right along. I'm glad because I was afraid you were going to ask me to say what all those acronyms meant. And I was, and Christie's not here, I don't know if you guys know them or not, or they probably wrote them down, but dodged a bullet there. Finally, we're going to talk about our communications and, and what our strategic plan is going to look like with communications. And so the first one, I'm going to kind of do these one at a time. So for the first one, with the district as large as Carmel Clay Schools, there's an abundance of information coming at both students and families each day, just a plethora of information. So we need to continue to establish reliable, consistent, and concise information delivery process. In other words, we don't want to overload folks, we want to get them the information that they need. And, and how do we do that in the most efficient delivery process? And the best way to do that is to analyze the pathways with the people who are receiving the information to see what's the best way to do that. From there, with so much that goes on with our district and, and many of our families have limited access to, and, you know, they may learn a lot about their school or their child's school or at one grade level in particular, but how do we enhance our school-to-home communications? So continue to train our school representatives on best practices in communicating home, maybe increasing our branding, establish standards for branding frequency and content. So the idea is to get our community more in tune with how are we going to receive information and where's a consistent place that they can look and find what they need to know quickly. And then finally is, you know, our students are the most appropriate storytellers and content creators we have because they're the ones that are doing all the amazing things. So how do we tell the CCS story? And we've already begun utilizing our twice monthly message to the community to highlight important and interesting stories along with the school board recap. Create social media tips and tools for schools to better represent the community online. Increase frequency and utilization of new posts on our website. It's a whole package deal is how do we tell our story? How do we get the information out and, and get that communication out? So our teacher, you know, not only our, our kids, but our teachers, our, you know, our staff, our parents, our community is aware of what's going on in Carmel Clay Schools. And then finally, recently, and you saw tonight on a slideshow that was created by students. So want to increase student internships and experience in community relations and marketing or whatever we have to offer here so they can have real-life experiences and create and utilize student positions for content creation and on-the-ground reporting. So we've got a lot of talented kids at Carmel High School and even in our middle schools that are already in, to journalism and communications. And what a great experience for them to be able to put together a program much like tonight where you can see their work on the screen. And so we'll continue that. And that is the final set of big rocks.
Well, thank you, Dr. Beresford. Before we get to additional questions with regards to communications, what are the next steps that you are going to be taking with unpacking the big rocks and presenting to us either through a report or what are the next steps?
Yeah. Next steps was to get your feedback, you know, on the, on these, all the different big rocks in the different divisions. And then, once we get that feedback, and then the next step would be developing strategies and getting our strategy list going. And, and then we want to do pretty much something similar to what we put on the website with our last strategic plan where we have everything laid out and then, and then we can mark how, you know, where we're at at any particular time with any of the big rocks. So that's kind of the, the process we're looking at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I know I've hit you guys with a lot of information, so as you digest that and, and, you know.
And then will we receive this? Could we receive your PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
I don't seem to have that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions with regard to the communication plan or yes, Katie?
Well, you know, this is like my cup of tea, so I love this. Good job, Emily and team. My first thing is I love the fact of establishing the standards because I think definitely with social media, you see parents are like, well, my school told me this, well, I didn't hear about that, what is my school doing that? So I think having like that standard of every school is different and has a different personality, but making sure that we're having some clear messaging that goes in between schools so that people aren't necessarily feeling out of the loop. And maybe they were not out of the loop, they just didn't get the memo or whatnot. So I love having some of those standards. I'm, I think similarly to how we looked at Canvas and making sure that there was like some standards across the board with there, I know we're always continuing to work on that, but just kind of in other forms of communication. So I love that. I also love the part about telling our story. I think definitely we've seen like, there's a lot of misinformation out there. And so I think by utilizing the opportunities that we have to making sure that we are telling about what's going on in Carmel Clay Schools, I think is wonderful. So I appreciate and applaud these efforts and I look forward to hearing more about them.
And just to piggyback on what you're saying about misinformation, I do think it's important that we continue to utilize our website and other avenues as a way for people to find out accurate information. Because I think people recognize that there's a lot of misinformation out there and they're seeking what is actually the truth and we are the best at telling what's going on. Okay. I think that covers this portion as well.
So the next time I say we're going to do a, a, like a strategic plan light, understand that's going to be a couple hours. Now, I really appreciate you taking the time and good questions and that gives us all, you know, good feedback that we can use as we go through the next steps in developing the plan. So appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And next is reports and Dr. B, that's all you.
Yeah, the last thing on the agenda is the superintendent's report. And so I already hit number one because we talked about no shave November. So first, one on my list here is I'm excited to report that this afternoon, we distributed a communication to the district, everyone in the district, parents, about our launching our new curated resource webpage. And that explains the details for instructional materials and the differences between curriculum and supplementary materials and library books. So by using this new website, webpage, the materials webpage, parents can learn more about the three types of instructional materials used in Carmel Clay Schools, get the answers to a lot of frequently asked questions, and then review a step-by-step instructions to log in with your student and view the books that's been checked out from the media center. And then also in that same, that same resource, you can read book reviews and a short synopsis of the various works or books that kids check out. So what a great toolkit for, for parents to be able to, to get actively engaged in that. Now, these tools will allow families to easily access information about books and materials that are aligned with parental preferences. So it's important because what may be appropriate for one family may not be appropriate or seen as appropriate for another family. And so the collection of resources, this collection of resources and these tools for parents is one of the good things that came out from that July board meeting where some concerns were raised about a handful of books that were located in some of our media centers. Now typically, when there's an issue, we work with individual families who have concerns about reading materials. And by handling each case individually, this promotes collaboration between the schools and the families and to ensure that the reading materials are both challenging and appropriate, you know, to the student and then also it prevents unjust censoring of books. So to address those concerns that were raised in, in July, we created a committee of district and secondary administrators, media specialists, classroom teachers, and parents who read and reviewed each of the material books that were discussed during that night. And then they shared their recommendations with me and that went through one of our policies, in our policy where the superintendent can, can form a, a committee to do that. And, and they did a really nice job. So I just wanted to report a little bit to you that two of the titles from that evening were not in any Carmel Clay School library. Four of the titles were removed from circulation due to really more periodic weeding processes. This is things I've learned, you know, but they have a weeding process where they review older materials that have not been checked out over multiple years in order to make room for new stuff coming in, current, more relevant materials. So in other words, just hardly kids checked them out for over many years. And then three of the titles remain available either in the library or in a resource collection. And so I wanted to say that I appreciate the thoughtful work of that committee and I also wanted to give our media specialist a shout out for all the work they do. Like I said, I learned a lot about our media centers through this process and all the work they do in curating our collections and making the media centers, the media center such a special hub in our schools. And most importantly, I just appreciate their work in instilling a love of reading and also being a great resource for students and, and parents. You know, they become really primary instruction on, you know, research and especially at the older grades on, on doing research and finding good resources versus, you know, resources may not be as accurate. And that's that. Then I have some, in other news, you can't ask questions?
Sorry to interrupt, but one of the, the statements I picked up on is that you'd said there were four other books that were, that we're, we're keeping. four other books that were, that we're keeping, but they're resources. So could you touch on what do you mean by resources? Where are these located?
Yeah. Well, there's three titles, and one stated in the stacks, the other ones, I think two were put in what I call, we call a resource collection. What that is, is like, a lot of books, like, I remember buying them, you know, for my own kids, where you'll have a storybook, and then the storybook is really to help parents maybe work through, you know, a topic that their kid doesn't understand. So you'll have, like, the book will be the storybook, and the back says, for parents, or for caregivers, and they'll say, here's how you can use this book to help your child understand, like, I remember getting one that was about grief and loss, and how to help a child, you know, manage that through a story, you know. So those are what I would call something that would be put in a resource collection. So it wouldn't be available in the library, you know, like in the stacks, but if there was a situation where a family may need some, you know, some resources, that would be what we would call that resource area. If that makes sense, resource collection.
So a resource for families, not a resource for the student at the school?
Yeah, well, these books are more intentional about for adult and a parent to read together. A lot of the recommendations from the committee, which were very thoughtful, was that, you know, maybe this would be best, you know, this topic would be best covered with an adult present, and using the resources in the back of the book, so.
And so how would parents access those books?
They just need to contact school.
Oh, okay.
And so they're going to be in the library, but not in the stacks, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about that before I move on to, and then I promise this won't take very long, but it's pretty exciting, though. But first, I wanted to just talk a little bit, our football team's season came to an end on Friday night, and they had very high expectations, of course, but sometimes seasons come to an end, and we want to say congratulations to Brownsburg, the Bulldogs played a great game, and the Hounds came up a little short, but I also wanted just to congratulate our team and coaches and parents, and really all who contributed to an outstanding season. I've often said, as a coach and as administrators, it's easy to be a champion when you win, but when things don't go your way, that's when character is grown. And as Coach Hibbert said, he shared that this team was a special group, they were kind of like a band of brothers, and they met challenge after challenge, you know, with a great, strong resolve, and so I'm extremely proud of their efforts and their heart, both in victory and defeat, and real proud of that group, and they did, they had a great season. I did make it downtown to Lucas Oil Stadium to catch the marching Greyhounds, who were named the 2021 ISMA Marching Band State Finals runner-up on Saturday night. And I got to tell you, Carmel was the first to perform, so I got to see all of the bands that were in the finals, all 10 of them, and it's amazing to see, you know, that much talent on the field from all the different schools, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of kids. But when I watch the Hounds, it's amazing to see such precise performance, it's just so, the precision of it is just incredible. And then you mix that with really a high level of musicality, I mean, it was like being at a concert, but along with that was dance, and the design of the whole thing, and there's a lot of emotion in it, and they're moving all the time, you know, the only time they stop is for a big note, you know? It was just, it was just amazing. It was incredible performance, and I'm just going to go on record by saying, don't count the Hounds out for the Bands of America competition, because we are right there. And I will tell you that I think Indiana will be well-represented, because band after band proved how groups of students can create art and music, all moving in a lot of detail. So very proud of our kids and the directors and the parents, I mean, the parent crew that pulls that off is an amazing team, and just all the people that are involved in such a wonderful experience, that was really, really pretty special. And Jim Dandy did accompany me, and he made it through two or three bands before he sacked out. It was a long day for him. Because we also attended the cheerleading state competition that morning, and early afternoon, and our Carmel Clay Schools, high schools, state champs, they took home the top prize in the Large Varsity Timeout State Competition, and timeout, I guess, is a shorter time span to do the performance. And then also, they just nailed their performance in the second competition, again, with, like, kind of like the band with incredible precision and spot-on timing, like, the only time that they stopped was when, they were so precise that when they would stop, all of their ponytails would hit their back at exactly the same time. I mean, they, every detail was there. They were the runners-up in the afternoon for the Division A, and I can just tell you, they just nailed their performance in both competitions, and I was really taken back by the speed of their performance. And, you know, there's a certain cadence to it, and they were just going so fast, it was like, boom, and it was really impressive to see. So, and we're kind of coming to the close of the fall competitions now, so I wanted to say, for all the amazing students who worked so hard this fall and accomplished so much, congratulations. And I wanted to give out a special thank you to the school staff, the volunteers, and the parents of these students who put in so much time and effort, and support the hard-working kids that we have, just a really, really good fall. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Any board member have any comments they'd like to make before we close out the meeting? Fantastic. Well then.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.